Two fifty.
But it excluded the churches.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back from our last executive session. And Doug, we were at four or three fifty. And at this time, I've entertained a motion.
I move that regarding the conditional use permit of twenty dash oh nine, the BP properties, we will not request attorney's fees as per our agreement to remove that that case from the courts.
Wait a second.
Second, then.
Move to the second. Any more discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda item, which is one we added this morning. It's a Midas Gold comment letter that Commissioner Bingman has provided for us.
Your charge, Mr.?
Perfect. Yeah, it was, it was a comment letter from the county for the draft environmental impact statement, which is in the comment phase right now. That phase closes on Wednesday at midnight.
Do you want to sign that? Nope, I don't need it. I'm sorry, Dave.
Yeah, no worries. Just like I said, that was just a county, a list of the concerns that the county has about the draft environmental impact statement. This is not a remark on the Midas Gold project. It's the process to get there. So the draft environmental impact statement came out with all the alternatives, four or five alternatives, and basically after spending a lot of time looking through those, there were a few things that jumped out. There were the same comments that we sent in to them during the collaborative process. So our rec supervisor gave me a couple of his concerns about winter recreation and access, especially with that snowmobile route. And then that spawned another conversation of how they were gonna manage the winter access for vehicles on the Worm Lake Summit section. And there's just a series of issues that we've already commented on or added into that, but none of these have been addressed in that document. It's a whatever, three thousand page document. If you guys had a chance to even like look through it, the executive summary and all these things.
Not all of it.
It's available and they're very, very deep reading, you know?
So when you're saying that we've addressed these throughout the DEIS, I haven't been a part of that conversation, so who's addressing them?
So I was on the collaborative program, uh, process, the draft process that they had. It was actually, it was the Stednike Gold Collaborative with the agencies. Sort of, yeah, it was all the different agencies and municipalities involved that wanted to be involved. And I guess Gordon had been on that to start with.
That was the community agreement.
No, yeah, this is not part of that. This is the Forest Service Collaborative that they had. It was involving Midas and other entities involved.
I don't remember Gordon being on that, but that.
I think I took his seat either way. So anyway, Collaborative, it's been around for, I think, over a year at this point, and it was to make recommendations for the inevitable DEIS and then the final environmental impact. So in that process, you know, we had turned in some of the concerns that were social and resource, or excuse me, recreation-based factors. And when you look back through those two chapters that pertain to those two things in particular, there's really no mitigation mentioned. So when they talk about like the impacts to the fish in the East Fork or the South Fork of the Salmon River, they talk about how they're going to mitigate these problems. And with the things that I've included in the letter, there's, there's really no mitigation mentioned. So we talked about some of this earlier today with the conditional use permit is that, you know, we're gonna have pretty heavy-duty impacts on some of our infrastructure. We are gonna have, you know, problems with housing and things like that, as well as the wage competition that you were bringing up earlier. And again, none of that's been discussed. And I, you know, I don't know where we fall into it, but this is our opportunity to make our comments known, our concerns raised. So those are the, you know, like I said, the things that I went through and pulled out that I could think of, and we had already brought up through the process. And, you know, like I said, it was the effect on the infrastructure and then, you know, the concerns that we have about what that's gonna do to winter recreation specifically, but also summertime recreation back there. So, you know, there was a couple of hole, there were a couple of holes that were in the program for roads that they really overlooked, and I've mentioned these along the way, is that they have really almost no, no discussion of avalanche mitigation, which is gonna be a huge, huge part of that process.
So, and that's, I, I wish we would have done this a month ago. You know, we've been kind of talking about how to respond to some of this stuff, because some of this stuff I don't have knowledge of, so to put my name to it, I'm concerned with that, because I don't know. And the avalanche thing, I mean, that's something I have no idea on. Where will that avalanche stuff?
Starts as soon as you get off of the existing, basically from the parking lot where we stopped plowing the road right now at Worm Lake. As soon as you turn onto the steep section of that road, you go up about a mile, and it starts there, and, you know, really the routes that they're talking about are either Johnson Creek or the potential for Burnt Lawn Road, but Johnson Creek is a county road, Worm Lake is a county road. Again, we have no discussion, had, have had no discussion about what their plans are for those roads.
Will that be mitigated? So will that be mitigated with our road agreement with them? Because we are, through the, this process, we're making them mitigate, or making them draft a, an agreement with us on roads.
Right, and that, that will be, but again, these are our concerns that we have now an opportunity to raise in this process. And so if we choose not to raise these concerns at this point, then, you know, I see it as like us saying that we're okay with everything that's been said in the DEIS, and we have no comments on it. So we do have concerns, and again, some of these issues haven't been discussed or hashed out in that process, and they will be in the future, but they haven't been in this document that was created over the last two, whatever, two to five years.
So my concern is that, in essence, you're forming an opinion about something that's not really necessarily in front of you, and when we get conditional use permits or we get other things in front of us, they're gonna, people are gonna go back and mitigate that and say, we've already reached a decision. Here's the document that you produced. So I just think legally, you know, it concerns me, and I know it concerns Cindy. Cindy said the same thing to me when she saw this letter. She's like, I don't think we wanna do that. And I appreciate exactly what you're saying, because it seems like collectively as a group, we're kind of kept out of it, but I think as an individual, you know, but be careful, because when you comment individually even, it could put you in a position where you're conflicted out of any decisions that are involved in it then, so.
So you're recommending that the county doesn't make any comments on this process?
I'm, I'm saying you should do what you choose to do.
No, no, I'm not. I'm talking about it from a county perspective, is that
But you should be careful.
The county has an opportunity to raise our concerns in the process.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're gonna be able to do that during the CUP process, Dave. My concern is that you're gonna bias yourself. And I got a deal middle of last week sometime from Belinda on some posts that you had on the comment periods for Midas. And you shared a link with, say, the South Fork folks, which immediately bias your comments. And I don't want you to get into that position. This, I think, even kind of makes it a little worse. I know it seems kind of unfair, because we can't really talk about these things until it's sitting here in front of us in permanent process. But my goal is to protect you, so you can vote on this later on. And I'm hoping that the comment that was done on the post here last week has already gonna come back and bite you, because I think they're gonna use that and ask you to be recused from any more decision on Midas Gold.
I, I don't have any more interaction with any group than I read what I read.
Belinda has already contacted me. I forwarded everything I had to Carol, and I don't know if you've looked at it or not. And I don't know if it's that bad yet, but I just want you to be really careful about committing yourself before you get somebody up here in front of you asking for a permit.
I haven't done anything on the draft DEIS, because I was concerned with that. I mean, I don't, as a, as a commissioner, if there's anything that comes in front of me, I just, I don't want to appear biased one way or another, so I haven't done anything on that draft DEIS.
And that's, to me, is the best way to go. You're open-minded until it sits right here, they're asking you for something. Right now, you don't know a thing.
I can understand Dave's position, though. At what point do we, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at some of this water quality. Honestly, I haven't, I don't know anything about, you know, that part of it, so I, I don't want to make a statement that this is the county concern unless I've had time to research it. I'm not gonna lie. I think as far as the roads, we do have an opportunity to address those in that road agreement. The recreation, I kept asking Larry, what do we need to comment on recreation? Because I think that's, that's a big one. I mean, that will impact our winter recreation concerns. Social and economic, we've addressed the law enforcement and the housing shortfall of the EMS agencies. So we have requested they have to sign an agreement with us.
Not, not in the process that we're talking about. We've, we've done it through the conditional use process. But again, this is, this is the federal review. And so if we do not voice those concerns, or if we do not raise those issues at this point, then we're saying that we don't have any issues with them with the process again. So I, I, I think it's important, I, in my mind, it's important to separate yourself from like the project versus the process, and right now, we're in the process. We're not commenting on the project itself. We're commenting on, on the draft environmental impact statement that's been put out and finding places that they've made mistakes in it.
I am concerned that if we impacted that level, that afterwards, if it's approved, or if it's approved, that we will have, that we will have concerns. I mean, I think that the CUP, if, if it is approved, I mean, if it's not approved, we don't have any issues. If it is approved, what is that mechanism that we hold them accountable to these things? And some of the things that you're in here, I feel like we addressed with the logistics facility and the things that we added to that.
Well, I, you know, like I said, Valley County was a cooperator in this process. And I think, as a cooperator, what's that?
I wish we would have had total updates on that, because I didn't, I didn't understand that. I think, I didn't even understand that you were going with like a task force thing for them.
We talked about it in our commissioner updates. I mean, that was something that I was asked to be a part of.
And I think that process is more like, okay, we're, we're gonna need a road development agreement. We're gonna need something for employee housing as the county. So you guys know that this is gonna be coming down the line. We're gonna ask for this down the line. I, I don't have an issue with that, because that's just kind of a warning sign that this is, these are things we want. But I'm saying this post that you did has biased yourself. And I don't know if you can actually vote on anything. If they push this in a court of law, we're probably gonna lose out. And that's my warning to you is be careful what you do. And I know you, and I'm not against what, for or against Midas Gold, either one right now, but I just want to protect you so that you're still a part of the commission and can vote on that.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I maybe need to go back and look at, see what I posted on social media, because the call to arms was to send comments.
I know, but then you posted a statement in there on Save the Salmon and how to get onto their page, and that's immediately biased you. Understand what I'm saying?
Sure. I saw it as an informational post. I mean, there was no resource available.
Read on through the rest of them, because they have contacted me, and I don't know what Carol wants to do, or how far this is gonna go, but those are the things that come back and bite you later on.
So Dave, these are, so as you guys were going through the process, you were working with them, and I don't know who else was on that, who else was on the groups? Larry on that group? I mean, Larry had addressed recreational.
I think Larry was on there at different times. I, I actually, no, he was not on that group. This is not, it's different from the Bay of Forest Coalition, so it was a Midas Collaborative Working Group. And again, our commission asked me to join that group earlier this year. I took over the role that was there, and basically it was listening to their discussions about how the draft environmental impact statement process was evolving, what concerns that Valley County would have to include in there, which are exactly the concerns that I've addressed in the letter.
Okay, so Carol, if you've seen this, then, so the social and economic factors. Do we bias ourselves? Because we've already requested through the CUP to mitigate fire, EMS, housing, those types of things. The one thing I, I, I don't, and I won't put my name to, is the water quality issue, because I, I don't know enough about that. And that is something, you know, to address the water quality issue is outside my ability to, to talk about.
Well, I'm assuming if they're going down Johnson Creek as their main route, then there's gonna be other folks getting involved besides us on the water quality issue, because now all that stuff's going right by Johnson Creek.
Well, the EQ is probably involved in that and has a lot more knowledge of that than I do.
But what I'm saying is like, some of these comments, they're appropriate, just not timed yet. Until they get in, we start working on the road development, we're like, okay, now we're gonna talk about avalanche control on on Worm Lake Summit. How are you guys gonna do this? Then's when we get that, we can get very specific. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. You know, like I said, I, I guess I missed and understood what my purpose of being part of the collaborative was.
I could be wrong here, too. I just want you to keep unbiased, so that we can keep you in the process. It's kind of like the Carol's call. I just know that Midas Gold has contacted me three or four times, and I'm concerned about that.
So the recreation and access, that's something I've been asking about. How do we, how do we hold them accountable to making sure that we have our recreation access there? Larry said today they're covering it and have come to an agreement. I don't know what is in writing.
Well, it depends on which alternative they pick in the final. There's a bunch of different alternatives that are for whichever one they pick, and then we kind of get to start on, wait a minute, you forgot about a groomed trail down Johnson Creek, or?
They already have their approvals. What does it matter?
But if they don't pick that alternative, they pick another alternative, then we might lose that. Does that make sense?
Again, I was gonna say, I, I've been a part of that process, and I know what the alternative is. The alternative for getting snowmobilers around Worm Lake Summit is a good alternative, or a good proposal, but it doesn't address the people who access Worm Lake area, or excuse me, Worm Lake Summit area to recreate. It doesn't fully give you a, a good route down into Yellow Pine proper in the winter. So there's still, there's still some holes in there, which are, you know, what I'm bringing up.
As far as
Recreation.
As far as snow will be, there's still a route into Yellow.
And skiing, yeah, you bet. I mean, there's a lot of folks that use Worm Lake Summit. It's easy to get to.
Honestly, Dave, I think what you're trying to do is great. I just think it's, we just need to wait until we get to that road development, that permit in front of us. I can't, I can't consciously support a letter right now, because I just think it's in the wrong time in the process. We're gonna have a lot more muscle once they come to us with a permit. Okay, now what do you guys need? Then we can get really heavily involved. If they get turned down, then it doesn't matter.
Well, I'm just, I'm concerned with showing bias one way or another. I don't want to have to recuse ourselves. I don't want any trouble in the courts once we move, you know, past that. They don't get approved, it's not an issue. If they do get approved, then we're really going to have to walk very carefully to make sure that we haven't in any way biased the process up to that point. And that's what I'm hearing. Well, I mean, it's speculative. That's the whole problem. I mean, I can't speculate on what's, you know, potentially could happen. I'm just saying that it's something to be conscious of and to make that part of your decision process.
Well, I was gonna say, I assume that you understand, sorry, Cindy, just one second. I, I assume that you understand like the NEPA process.
Yes.
So with that said, then, are you saying, or would you recommend that the county does not participate in the discussion or in the comments?
I'm, I'm saying, as Commissioner Hasbrook is saying, that you just have to be cautious, because you don't want to step over the line and become an advocate. Because once you become an advocate one way or the other, then you aren't really unbiased and really
So then, would you say that I've already biased myself by being a part of that collaborative process? I mean, if you said that, then you could say that every agency involved is already
Yeah, I don't.
biased themselves up to this point.
I think it's a, a working, you know, I, I think it's a working group, like a workshop, and it's, hey, here's some concerns from Valley County, so.
Could he send that in just under his name? Cindy, you've been raising your hand. You want to say?
I do have a comment to make. Because I understand your need, I mean, what happens if they decide to do the logistics facility someplace else? And then you lose the road development agreement, the housing agreement, the service provider agreement, that you condition on that CUP today?
You just put it on the next CUP.
Right. But you also don't want to lose your opportunity to comment in this process like Commissioner Bingman would like to do. So why are we just saying we have no opinion or no bias or no? Now, we truly have no opinion as to whether or not this should be approved. I don't know all the formal words for the NEPA process. But if it is approved, we anticipate Valley County will be requiring a road development agreement to cover these issues. A social economic agreement to cover all of these issues.
And to make it really broad.
And submit it to them as part of that process. Without any opinion whatsoever.
And we would want to engage in a conversation about our recreation programs and how to mitigate those. And so keeping it really broad.
Well, what you're going to do, just tell them what you're going to do if it's approved.
I mean, I think that's good. I think you could also state an opinion that, you know, we aren't forming an opinion one way or the other, but here's some things we'd like you to think about. And I think that way it keeps you from saying, you know, here's what I think is wrong, or here's what I think is not addressed. Or it just keeps it pretty generic. It's like, look, we don't have an opinion, but at some point, it might be in front of us, and here's some things that we see that concern us.
Well, I wouldn't even go so far as to say opinion or concern. It's just that these are the issues we will be taking care of as part of our process.
And we've already done that with the facilities permit. We've already stated in there, we're gonna want a road development agreement. We're gonna want all these different things solved before we can approve anything else.
So just tell them what you're going to do.
They're gonna come in, they're gonna want facilities back at the mine site. There's gonna be probably some housing and that kind of stuff.
They've already been already.
Already built?
Issue two or three other CUPs already, back when they were starting the the drilling for the testing, what, ten years ago or so?
Well, the last time I was back there, there was only a couple of sheds.
Or, but I don't know if you want to lose completely this opportunity, but I would at least tell them. And then they get the idea, oh, there will be these other impacts. So as part of that, maybe they'll put a condition that they participate with Valley County. Just a different way to come at it.
I know why you want to do it. I think it's really important, and I think you're right. If you don't comment, it's like you didn't care. And I think that's the way that process works. You know, it's cast approval if you don't comment that this is a problem.
Well, like I said, this is the only opportunity that we're gonna have to weigh in on the process. We're gonna have an opportunity to add conditions to the projects as they come up in front of us, but we don't have the ability to comment on the process after this. So.
Well, by telling them what you're going to do is also communicate your issues. Roads, snowmobiling.
So I'm trying to figure out how we, I mean, we just did that on the CUP for the housing, the EMS, you know, and the emergency services, but how do we hold them accountable to our recreation programs?
As part of that, one of the says other infrastructure.
Oh, good.
That last provision.
Okay.
And they may come in and say, we're gonna plow Worm Lake Summit and keep that open, and then we're gonna gate it at the bottom, so we don't have public coming up there, skiers and
Well, it suggests that we met with.
fat tire bikes or whatever. They're gonna come up with that solution.
Well, and I want to respect Dave's time with this task force, because you obviously were asked to do this. And I just wish that we were doing this a month ago, so I had time to do some research work.
Well, I think we still have time. My concern honestly is not so much this letter, is, is the post that came out last week, where it, it kind of biases you when you put on the Save the South Fork Salmon web link to that, and this is how you comment, I'm going, oh my gosh. And they picked up on it. I just go, it's picked up on it, and I hope it's not too late to make sure that you, they're gonna allow you to vote later on on this stuff.
Well, and so that's why I'm trying to figure out how we do this without compromising all three of us. You know, I mean, how do we address these issues without getting too?
You gotta make it really plain, the fact we're not, we're not biased either way, but these are the eight things that we want to see a plan for. One of them is our recreation. How are you gonna keep public off, you know, Worm Lake Summit during the wintertime? What's gonna happen with the avalanche chemicals and the perchloride you're gonna spray on the road and what's that? How are you gonna handle that as far as water quality and and South Fork and Johnson Creek and those other streams out there? I mean, that way, that, to me, that's unbiased. You're just asking, we're, we're gonna want that information.
Well, you're gonna require that information.
We're gonna require that, right.
So, I mean, put yourself on the same level as the federal government, because they're taking care of the mines. You need to take care of the stuff outside, and you're going to require these things.
And then we can restate the fact about, you know, you've got to provide some kind of employee housing. Or, you know, low-income housing, or whatever we call that, so that when you guys are done and gone, it's still here, and we can still use that for other stuff.
And the greater conversation is they need to be a part of that process, not necessarily just provide it, but be at the table for the conversation on how we're gonna mitigate. Dave, would you feel comfortable that if we ask Carol to take this letter and try and make it something that we wouldn't get in trouble? Do you have a concern with that?
No, absolutely not.
Would you be willing to do that, maybe verbiage it to something that's pretty broad and basic and that we don't have?
Based on some of the conditions that we did approve today and maybe expanding on those slightly.
But you, your vote.
I mean, I can work on something, Cindy, I can work on something. And I'm trying to express our concerns and say, here's the, here's the questions we're going to want answered to when, you know, it comes in front of us. Not, we've made a decision that you can't mitigate, this is, this is, these are the questions we're gonna ask you. So that, and I think it comes across then, Dave, as a concern.
Well, now, as my intent is to say, there are good conditions that we, we did not see addressed in the DEIS.
And I'm looking back to the community agreements, and, you know, the city signed on, the county didn't. They totally removed themselves in that process, so that they weren't biased, so I, I'm looking at that and kind of equating that to the same situation. The cities are commenting now. The, the county didn't remove itself. The Midas Gold withdrew their offer.
withdrew it, right.
They withdrew their offer of allowing us to participate, so the decision was never made. Well, and that makes sense, because
Because they realized that that would have biased us, all three of us. I don't know. After what, three long evening meetings all over the county? I'm gonna get those hours back.
Dave, I really appreciate it.
I think it was really helpful, and I think it was good, and I think it brought a lot of good information out. Yeah, at the, at the end, before the vote was taken, they just returned the invitation for the county to participate. And that was probably a good call. That was probably a good call.
What does that do, that letter?
Wednesday at midnight.
By Wednesday. Well, and you could take a lot of his stuff that he's wrote down and just kind of make it a little less biased or a little nicer, or I don't know how to say that, but and make it fairly easy, just the stuff that's in there.
Just the rubber impact and preface it was there.
Concerning at that point.
Taking a position.
I mean, you don't have a meeting between now and
Right.
Can we call a special meeting just to reference this on Wednesday?
It has to be declared as an emergency, but.
The only other option is Dave can put it in just from himself as his own personal citizen, and that's
It's on the agenda today, correct? You can continue it to Wednesday?
Well, it's not on the agenda as an action item.
No.
Couldn't have been added that way, so.
It probably should have been as an action item, though.
But you couldn't have added it this morning as an action item. It's not an emergency.
Right.
So therefore, we can't vote on it anyway, do you think?
Correct.
What else to do?
So now, I
Like what you do, what you want to do.
I purposely not put in a personal letter of anything, just, you know, so that I'm totally, I'm unbiased. I don't comment on anything. So, I mean, if, if we can't legally do something between now and then, Dave, I think you're gonna have to put in something, you know? going to have to put in something, you know, from you and not the county because I don't know.
That's the only way we can do it. Yeah, you're absolutely right. We can't vote on it. We can't get together again before the deadline is up. So Dave wants to put that in under his name.
Well, I think Valley County planning is only part of.
Do you have a meeting between now and Wednesday?
Well, not the commission, just the department. The last gets the word there.
Is that bias you in some way?
I think, I'm not a decision maker. I can say these are the things the county will be looking at.
What'd you feel about that, Dave?
I'm, yeah, I think that'd be a great idea as well.
Um, so I can draft something and I can send it to you and ask for comments.
And then from, then this will be from Valley County planning is on.
That these are the things we'll be looking at as part of our Matthews.
I don't have a problem with that.
If you think we can do legally, I think that's great.
Well, I want to, I want to show him this so he understands because I'm feeling like I'm the bad guy.
I think you can pull it up and look at it.
Well, you need to see the comments from, scroll up and they're watching this.
Um. Hey Dave, I really do appreciate you taking the time to do this. This is not a small amount of work that went in there and honestly, I just wish we were doing it before today. And I think Cindy, if you put that in, then that will at least reference what concerns came out of that, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's a issue. I mean, I'm not a decision maker. It's not going to bias your decision at all.
Okay. You understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, anything else on this? You're going to handle it? Maybe send us a copy before you ship it out? We can, we feel like we need to say something differently. It's tough, it's a tough position here because you can't, well, what are you guys going to do about this? Well, you can't bring that up yet because you haven't got the permit in front of you yet. Can't talk about that yet. It's like, makes it so hard to do this job sometimes.
I've had a lot of questions from people in the community saying, what's your stand on this? And I said, I can't take a stand on things. I have to just make decisions based on what comes in front of me. I can't tell you that I'm for or against anything.
Yeah. I tell people it depends on the permit.
I said, no, but that was the best advice that Gordon gave me, you know, before I stepped on. He said, don't, don't bias yourself, you know, anyway, just don't take a stand on anything prior to when it comes in front of you legally.
And I think on a three member board, if one person is, can't vote or is biased out and it's a yes or a no vote, I mean, it's a tie vote, it's an automatic no.
Right.
So keep that in mind too. Okay, then I guess we are done. Doug, we're adjourned at three twenty or four twenty-five, twenty-four, whatever.[1787.01]